I feel, I feel funny to say welcome, but welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of May 18th. I would like to start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll start by saying Mr. Brunel plans on attending if we are still in session. He's coming back from Boston, so he said he'd be a few minutes late. And next thing we have here is review of items for consent. We have the minutes of May 11th, accounts payable manifest for $36,942 and 20, sorry, $36,946 and 22 cents, payroll manifest of $42,842. Pipeline info table at solid waste facility renewal of delegated deposit investment authority from the treasurer to Terry Brand and Pat Texter and Claire Croto. Anybody have anything from consent that they wanted to remove?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept, approve the items for consent.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion made by Mr. Lemire, second by Mr. Bork. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Close to a vote. All is in favor, please say aye. Aye. All is opposed? All is abstained.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero, one. Any items for other business? Well, we won't do public input until after 6:15, so we'll go right to the administrator report. We'll start with old business. IT services.
IT services. I had a question last week about the term town official and said we'd run this up back past council. I shared council's comment that town official can pretty much refer to anything the selectman wanted to, since it's your creation in the personnel policy. She did, she said she didn't see why it couldn't fall in that category, but she said it wasn't necessarily a good fit, but ultimately because we wrote the policy to cover different sets, there wasn't an ideal fit. It wasn't like there was something we were missing. Her suggestion was that we drop it altogether. And so I explained that the notion is still that we're looking at something that is an employee type relationship. It's not complete independent. She was fine with that. So what you'll see is a revised, where we talk about compensation. The section 2.0 is where we had the previously referenced the town official. We dropped that. We refer to compensation as compensation. And 2.2 notes the compensation will be paid through regular payroll. So again, kind of it, it is, it's showing that the intention is as a employee of the town, but without trying to make it fit one of those blocks in our personnel policy that don't fit for this type of thing. Other than that, it remains the same. You know, this is the same situation we've been talking about for a while. Good deal for the town relative to if we had to buy this on the private market. We're lucky to have this kind of service available to us.
I would agree. Any questions or comments from the board? I'm gonna take that as no. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the contract for services as, as written.
Chairman, I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Byron and a second from Mr. Lemire. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Close to a vote. All is in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion carries four, zero, zero. And now we will move on. Next item.
Short and sweet on pipeline discussion. I have nothing necessarily new to engage all of us with. I have a meeting tomorrow with the municipal coalition when we'll be discussing where we want to go as a coalition with hiring council. I expect we'll come out of that meeting tomorrow with a decision made. I've shared some other information that's come through over the past week. The, the Access New England, the slides from the Spectra presentation, that's an alternate pipeline. Tom Young shared that from the NRPC meeting on Friday. Further down, you'll see a interesting set of notes and comments from Steve Buckley at the Municipal Association in his meeting with FERC. There's actually some interesting material there. So just that continues to move along and take a little bit of my attention each week. Any other questions on that issue?
Anyone?
We had a nice stack of paperwork here that I've shared electronically with you.
Mr. Revow?
Lauren, Lauren from Avatar has passed along on the preliminary value notice that will, has gone out and should be, I think just about everybody should have received that end of last week. On our end, we have also an owner index report, an old to new value report, a value list report. So some of the initial, all of sort of the initial comparative data reports, those are all attached onto this note that you have here. The information is also available on Avatar's website. I think that was noted in the, in the letter that went out to people. Selectmen Lemire mentioned to me before the meeting that may not be clear to everybody looking at it, that property ID and what we call map and lot are the same terminology. And when you go in on the Avatar site, you'll have to do map number and then a dash and then your lot number. So we'll look at helping anybody who has a question and obviously all the information is here, both electronically and in paper format. The summary right now is the base land moved up from about 110,000 to 118,000. By base land, we mean the, the first acre of a parcel, the way that this is done, the first acre is always privileged as the developable lot and it carries the highest value. Base residential values went up from 71 square feet to 76 square feet, but then she notes it's also a little misleading because some additional depreciation was added. Higher square foot costs ensures new construction values are in line, but older homes get depreciation. So in some ways, those numbers kind of come out in the wash for individual parcels. What she also attached, and this was interesting to look through, is the sales statistics overviews from October 1st, 2013 to now and October 1st, 2014 to now. You know, what, these numbers, when I talk about 118,000 and 76,000, they don't come out of thin air. They're based on their analysis of sales data. The correlation of the sales data is great. If you look at the, you know, if you look at the ratios, they're almost, they're spot on where you want them to be. So it's not like we're forcing in with bad data. The next step at this point is that people have received that preliminary notice and they'll be encouraged from this, end of this week and all through next week to call Avatar to set up appointments to discuss any questions they may have. Most likely, you know, there will be, there, I'm sure there will be questions. There should be questions. And so anybody who looks at it, who has a chance to take a look at it, it's always better to get the information than not. They'll set up appointments. They're expecting it early June. And, you know, new values will not be implemented to the December bill. And so between now and then will be a fixing of the numbers and a final report back to the board. And I'd expect that Avatar will be here. You know, that's a good presentation for them to be here with the board.
Yes. Without the TV on, I couldn't see a hand up.
You need to get those little little mirrors in attention. That was my stealth mode. The question I wanted to ask you was, I was reading that report and she said that the values per square foot went from 71 to $76, but depreciation was impacting that. My take on that is if there's depreciation on a home, that should drop the value. So it should actually be something like 71 to 78 and then maybe two, and I'm making up numbers now, $2 depreciation. Am I looking at that wrong or what am I not seeing on?
What, what you're not seeing is that that's a ham handed number that covers the whole town. So you take that, the number goes up because newer construction has a higher value, but if I apply the $76 per square foot to your older house, with the 76 still goes in when you look at the card and then it gets discounted at another part of the math that then takes the depreciation down. So your functional square feet may be 65, $68 a square foot. You start at 75 and the depreciation takes it down.
So, so is the 76 a weighted value?
The 76, the, the way the 76 shows up at the card, no, that is the unweighted, that is the starting value if new today. The weights, the depreciation come in elsewhere. So if you look at the math on the card, you'll see that, you know, there's a full value based on this math. And then when they run it through the system, it depreciation lowers that number to be what your real number is.
So that, that depreciation's taken on the individual card, not the town assessment?
Right.
That's where I was.
Right, right. Yeah, it's one size fits all. And then, you know, you will also find that when you look at those cards, you also see quality numbers. So you'll see average, you'll see average plus 10, average minus 10. That's another factor. The way this all works is it's a one size fits all number for the features and the land, and then it gets adjusted from there.
Thank you. Was that humorous or something?
No, I saw, I saw the truth come up in front of me.
Oh, oh, you actually looked at your own report?
Unreal.
And this is a new assessment?
Yeah.
So there is no comp value or comp ratio?
No, no, this is, you know, this is the every five years where the clock resets. So the other thing to bear in mind and remind people over and over again is if you see a new number, do not look at the current tax bill and take the current tax rate times the new bill. Or times the new value. Because remember, what, what ends up happening is as the overall tax base grows, the over, we still need to get the same amount of money for town and school for whatever the voters voted on. So the tax rate will go down in, in theory unless something is dramatically different in your home, your December taxes should be in the same general vicinity as your current taxes, unless we have had you wildly over or under assessed for some reason.
But the December rates will be based upon the new assessment?
They'll be based on the new assessment townwide. So as we get closer to that, I will dust out, I think, you know, we put together a flyer five years ago, the last time we did this, explaining this is what a new property value means to your taxes.
What was the coefficient of confidence?
It's on the chart. It's on the chart, actually. So we'll dig that out and make that available for people again, because that will be the next wave of questions after the initial value will be, how does this impact my taxes?
And this goes to the state when for agreement?
This'll go.
September?
Yeah, it should go, I think, by September. I mean, I think they're, that, once they finish these preliminary reviews, take care of any other loose ends, they, they get that report off to the state at least, yeah, I probably do by September 1. That's.
Because DRA's got to approve it, right?
Yes, yeah, I mean, they accepted their own approval usually takes a slightly lagged period of time. They're going to be probably another year out before they finally approve it. You know, they do little testing of it. I mean, I think you'll see, I have a note down under the informational items I shared that DRA has, was through to do their assessment monitoring. They pick some sample data and go out and follow. The report that they gave, they had no issues at all on the samples that they picked. All of their verification of Avatar's field data matched, so.
So we just covered the next agenda, right?
We did. Yeah, well, yeah, I put those two together because they kind of fit together anyway. So, because we do it, and I guess that's the understanding is, you know, we do it and then DRA verifies and kind of test samples the work we do. The full report that Avatar does behind these numbers are the data, you know, the market studies, the data, the, where the derivation of the numbers for all the features come from. You know, when you look at your detailed card, you're gonna find, you know, your fireplace is worth X, your swimming pool is worth Y, and those are values that we apply. Those all come in from a larger report book that they do.
Uh huh. Any questions? Other questions?
Not at this present moment.
How about now?
Not yet.
Anything else?
Only other thing I just bring to your attention is police cruisers. We should be finally getting our two new vehicles outfitted and delivered shortly. There's been a lag time in getting everything here. The, earlier this year, Chief, Chief and I were talking about looking at the other vendors in the market. There's only a couple of them that do setup. We've been working with company MHQ the past couple of years. There's another company I was familiar with, Adamson and Haverell. And we had found that Two Way Communication out of Newington had also been getting into the business. So we decided it was time to just do a check and see, hey, are we getting the best, both value as well as turnaround for time? And I shared a note with you from the chief. He's been a little frustrated as well with the downtime relating to some of the electrical issues. Everything's been taken care of, but we simply have had downtime and that's an MHQ issue. That's not just run over to Londonderry Ford. He's decided to go with Two Way. He was impressed with the setup of the work they've done, the knowledge they showed, pricing was competitive. They think they can turn stuff around in four or five days. Things have a, they handle all of the warranty work for all of the pieces that are added in. Obviously, the Ford things are covered by Ford, but all of the other setup things are handled through them. They offer more onsite repair here. So both cruisers have been delivered to Two Way. Last one, most recently, one went today. And hopefully we'll have them in circulation for us by the end of next week.
Are they both gonna be completely different from the other two cruisers?
No.
No? I already asked you if you had a question.
I don't have a question. I, I have a statement. And that is just to let you know that the county is having the cruisers fitted. They're taking them up to Manchester. And that's why I sent you that text message.
Yep.
Last Friday. And apparently they were finding that there's a shortage of the cages and the wigwags and stuff like that. So I don't know whether you're gonna run into that or not in the town, but I do know the county was having difficulties because they bought three new cruisers and they were trying to get them fitted up and they just couldn't get the, the parts for them and stuff.
For at least one of the vehicles, Two Way has all of the parts already in place. Because we talked to them last week and said when it was coming. I talked to the chief this afternoon. He said they're set for one. So, yeah, I mean, because unfortunately, and what you flagged is there's the challenge that we have in all these things, it's feast or famine. Because, you know, the purchasing cycles for towns and states all are on the same thing and everybody wants everything done at once. I think ultimately that's kind of the challenge MHQ has too, is they do a lot of mass state police work. Mass state police orders everything all at once and you can only paint and wire the cars so quickly.
County's paying $45,000 per vehicle.
Are you kidding me?
No. Because I, that's exactly why this came up, because I questioned, what are you guys putting on these things?
Wow. We pay less than half of that or, you know, I guess full freight about half if we had to start from scratch if we weren't putting in cameras and stuff.
What are they putting in that we aren't?
Does that, oh, actually, does that include the vehicle or is that on top of the vehicle?
That includes the vehicle.
Okay. Oh, well, 45, well, that, that would be about right then.
Yeah, I thought we were on 42.
Yeah, that, that, okay. All right. For a moment, I thought you were talking just setup on top of 23 for the vehicle.
No.
Okay, so then it's right in the right ballpark.
They're, they're talking vehicle purchase price plus the fitting out is about 45 and some change. I told them that we were doing the same thing for about 42.
Yeah.
In that neighborhood, 43.
Yeah. And, and you know, the wild card difference there is, you know, if, if, remember when we put the video system in, we put all the videos in at once. The video adds about three grand per vehicle. So depending on what they have in the vehicle, that could be the difference, so. But anyway, they're underway and I just wanted to know, I mean, we did look sort of at the market and it's one of those things where they're all, they're all state bid, so, you know, our purchasing policy is a little fuzzy on those, so.
And our current vehicles are still running fine?
Our current vehicles are running.
Well, I was actually referring to the two new ones we have? Three new ones we have? How many of the new ones we have?
We don't have new ones.
The SUVs? Two of them?
We have two of them.
All right. And they're both running fine?
For the moment. One's up over 100,000 miles.
I knew.
So it surpassed.
We expected it to be there by the time these came.
Yeah, yeah, it's surpassed our target for this, so, yeah, I mean, they, they all have their own incidental issues. There's nothing huge. The problem has simply been for us that some of them have some minor work that needs to be done, some discretionary work, like a little bit of body work that we've been waiting on. Oh, we can't take a vehicle out of circulation to go get some of the body work done and not have it available to us for primary service.
And just for the public's information, that was the result of a prisoner deciding to kick the vehicle, if I understand correctly?
One of them was that. I think one of them was of our own actions as well, so.
Okay.
Just as an observation while we're on that front, we had a, the, the department wanted, and I were talking this afternoon, they were very pleased they had a situation arrest, with an arrest, I think I say, I guess yesterday, I guess, a suspect in a fire in Nashua that was arrested in Litchfield. You know, that was, in our, on our end, that was Officer Ivis with the lead on that. They were discussing some of that, the, the, the operation with me this afternoon, and they were very pleased to have had the video. The video has helped them a lot in the process and, you know, it's a very high quality system. They were pleased to have that, not only for the incident, but also the, but also in vehicle. And the other thing they pointed out, and, you know, Officer Ivis was particularly pleased, said, I'm glad I had the new tasers, because it was a situation that involved using the taser and they were very pleased with how it worked and how it meant that the situation did not escalate. So this is why we buy that kind of stuff and it does get used, so.
Good to know.
Yep.
All right. Anybody have any other questions? Jason? Hearing none. I'm gonna open the floor to public input now that it is 6:28. 6:28, 6:28. All right, I'm gonna close public input now that everybody's looking. Because there's nobody here. So the next thing we have now is selectmen reports. Do any selectmen have any reports?
When is it? Next week, there's a budget committee meeting on Thursday. And other than that, it's been not much going on from my end. The county, just to give you a heads up, the county's going through individual meetings on the budgets and stuff like that. I have all types of information if people are interested in it. I have also mileage history of vehicles and everything else if you're interested in that as well. Much different than the towns, but that's just.
How far they run, you mean?
Yeah. And hopefully the budget should be coming out for the county sometime around June 2nd or 3rd.
I'd love to see that information on the mileage.
Okay, I will, I will scan it and send it to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind putting a CC to me, I'd love to.
CC all of us.
I won't send it to Jason though.
He didn't ask for it.
I know.
That's because I'm interested in the rest of it. See, I would ask you for the rest of the context. Mileage is but one data point. Number of hours of day of operation, how many vehicles and where they go.
Just to see what it says.
Yeah. You know, because there's a range of the issues.
I may have to redact some data.
Yeah.
And the reason I say that is I believe that the report also contains the license plates of some undercover cars.
Yep.
So it wouldn't be a good thing to put out. I may have to redact some. I have to, I have to look at it.
Yeah.
See, what, what the new cruisers need is the funky new feature I have in my truck that I noticed, is it gives you the average miles per hour since the vehicle has been first started.
Yeah.
So every time it's running and everything like that, it gives you the average mileage, like speed of the vehicle. And that way there, they can tell if it's a highway vehicle, if it's a around town vehicle, or if it sits around and just runs.
Okay. So where are you at?
Mine's a 26 miles per hour.
All right.
Yep.
Evidently, they left it running a long time before I ever got it.
Yeah, I, I had that feature in my car. Unfortunately, mine can only go 26 miles per hour, so.
It's just a pedometer, right?
I'm your carbon offset.
Any other selectmen reports? There's a planning board meeting tomorrow night that I cannot attend. My son has a baseball game and I am his coach, so is there anybody that would like to attend the planning board meeting tomorrow night?
I have a meeting in the private department, so I can't.
You said like to attend. No, I wouldn't like to attend.
Then I'll tell him there's no coverage.
Mr. Lemire looks like he, I thought I heard him say when he came in that he was glad to get out of the house.
Yeah, well, I'm not that glad.
I can attend for, I can attend for.
Thank you very much. I will send them.
Yeah, a lot like me.
I'll send you the.
Any big things coming up or anything?
The.
You don't have to discuss, I can just talk.
Yeah, you may actually want to rethink that. If I remember correctly, the lion's share of their agenda is a conversation about the pipeline. So we may be sending Mr. Byron, who then may not be participating.
Well, that would be a good thing.
So you may want to double check that agenda.
Well, if you're saying it.
If that's in fact the point, then.
I, I know, I know that's one item. I'm not sure what else. So, you may want to double-check that agenda.
Well, if you're saying it.
If that's in fact the point, then...
I, I know, I know that's one item. I'm not sure what else is there. I know that's there because Russ has been looking for a little bit of advice, so I've seen that document going back and forth, so.
I see a home occupation sign, a public hearing for the subdivision site plan changes, and committee reports.
Okay, great.
So, you don't see anything on the pipeline?
Nope.
Yeah. So, it'll probably be there, but, but they have other business they're dealing with. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I know that Russ was planning on talking to you and getting a lot written, but I don't know.
Okay, good.
Seven?
Yes. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Do we, Corey, or Jaren, do we, what's planned for next Monday? Do we know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be having a potty. Sure, if you want, Tom.
I don't have any information yet as to times. When I do, I will send them out.
Oh, next Monday is in the parade.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, isn't that, oh, okay. I was gonna say, we're not meeting.
No, and, and I don't know that you, well, you probably might start at 10, but...
Usually at noon.
Well, I know one thing, I can't march.
I'm assuming, since things don't wildly change from year to year, that it's lineup, yeah, it's lineup at 9:30 at the middle school parade, starting at 10. So...
We'll make sure an email goes out before the end of the week.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything else? There's no items moved from consent. There's no other business other than two non-publics.
You've got that meeting coming up? That's still on for the 20th?
The meeting for the land on, off of Page Road?
Yeah.
Yes, that is Wednesday night, in this room at 7:00 PM. I don't, what are we calling that?
I, I need some better name than I'm, because it's not just rec, so...
Yeah, it's like a land use
Yeah.
planning meeting?
I called it development off Page Road, which isn't a great answer either, so. But I can't, yeah, I can't really just call it rec fields, new rec fields either. So, good, see, hey, there's a charge for the committee.
There you go.
Give me, give me something to call this.
Is Rick gonna be there?
I do not.
Um, he's been invited.
He's been invited.
It's my understanding, so.
Okay.
I know Kevin's gonna be there. He already told me he was gonna be there.
Yeah.
Kevin Lynch. You can come too if you want. So, we'll see. We'll, we'll go over it. We have plans. Plans are in your office, right?
Yep.
So, I'll go in and grab them that night?
Yep.
Perfect. Actually, I'm sure Kevin will have them as well. Okay, so is there anything else? Anybody want to give me a motion to go in a non-public?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go in a non-public session under RSA 91A:32C.
Okay. What about the other one?
Are we doing both at once or...
Um, we're gonna do one and then we're gonna do, do the next. So, I would say let's do this one,
Yep.
wrap it up, and then we'll do the next one.
Okay, perfect. So, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Byron?
That's 91A2C is for reputation. Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Perry, yes. Mr. Bork, Mr. LeMire?
Yes.
Okay, so with that said, we have one more non-public session to do after we come out of that non-public session. And then we will just adjourn. So, with that, we have no other meeting for the rest of the night. I'd like to say good night to everybody and Happy Memorial Day coming up in a week.